Abel. Thank you. It's seven oh two, I'm gonna open up the meeting. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, it's presently being shown on Channel nine, it will continue to be shown on Channel nine, and it will be uploaded to YouTube. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Please remain standing.
I wish to mention the passing of a resident of Dayton, Diane Wood, and I also mention the passing of Louise Perry Cabral from the town of Rehoboth. For those of you who are my vintage, and probably for the next twenty years after DI was in operation, Louise Cabral worked in the cafeteria, she was a baker's assistant, very pleasant lady, and she also recently passed, so in memory of Diane Wood and Louise Cabral, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we won't be meeting next week, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month, it's gonna be Christmas. So, our next meeting is January eighth, twenty twenty. Schedule of appointments, we're gonna skip that until gentleman comes in. Announcements, is a townwide parking ban in effect until April first of next year. No person shall be allowed any vehicles, vehicle to remain in the streets so as to obstruct snow removal. Police will take notice. Board of Health meetings will be held on a monthly basis beginning January twenty twenty. Memorial Day Parade planning open meeting is set for January ninth, twenty twenty, at seven PM in the Old Town Hall upper level. And the town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next on January eighteen, twenty twenty, locating the town hall in the lower level. Public input.
I actually have one announcement that didn't make our cutoff for the agenda because it came in yesterday, but it's not requiring your action. It's just a notice from Columbia Gas, and I have it here at Town Hall, or if anybody would like this information, just email me and I'll send it over accordingly, that if you need any assistance this winter, they have some programs available to you if you meet certain criteria. So, I didn't want to wait until January because winter's obviously upon us. So, I have that here if you'd like to stop by or email in.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna mention a couple of meetings that have been scheduled. January twenty eighth, the DR Financial Advisory Committee will be meeting again, and we will be talking about the preparation of the FY twenty-one, wow, school operating budget. The advisory committee had a meeting this past week, and so we will be moving ahead, and we will all be learning about the impact of the Department of Education's oversight of the regional school district for at least the rest of this fiscal year. And the other thing I would mention is that on the fourteenth of January, there will be a continuation of the hearing of the zoning board for Strawberry Fields. It was a meeting last night, but unfortunately due to illness, they weren't able to proceed, so that's coming up if you're interested in Strawberry Fields.
Any other public input? If not, we'll hear the town administrators' report.
So, at the, at a previous selectman's meeting, we reviewed and adopted an asset tracking system, and we adopted a threshold of two hundred dollars. Anything that was two hundred dollars or more in value, we would track. And it turns out that's probably too low of a threshold specifically for certain departments like police, fire, and highway. And we discussed this at the department head meeting we had this month, and we're just seeking you to reconsider that value. I know Selectman Goulart was there at that meeting, if she has any comments, I don't mean to take that away. But we were also talking about splitting this up into what exactly we would want departments to put together. A department like the fire department has quite a few assets, so it poses an unjust burden on that department to have such a small dollar value. So, I don't know if you want to exempt certain departments, if you wanna raise the threshold totally, or if you don't wanna reconsider at all.
No, we kinda tossed that around a bit, and we kinda referred also back to what currently is listed, because there were some inventories, they didn't go down that low. But maybe five hundred is a more reasonable limit, or a thousand dollars, depending upon what it is, somewhere around there.
Is the primary focus the safeguarding of the things that we own more than anything else?
Yes.
That's my position.
Tracking, yeah.
My position is we should just exempt those departments with an understanding that they usually have more expensive things.
You can't do that, you can't do that.
Why?
Because pretty much the state accounting system includes things like guidance on inventories. You can set your own limits, as long as you don't, for example, if there's a particular limit of, I'm thinking of contracts, twenty-five thousand, that's pretty cast in stone. You can't say, well, we're gonna sign those up to fifty. So, when you look at assets, if you stay within, you can have low limits, you can establish limits, but you can't just say, we're not gonna track them. It's public property, it's public assets, and you get to a certain thing, so.
No, no, I'm not saying exempt them completely, I'm just saying have a higher threshold for those particular three departments.
I mean, they have the bigger ticket.
What you actually said was to exempt those departments, that's why I think you responded that way, so.
Yeah, yeah, we've gotta be careful picking and choosing, that's all I'm saying, let me say that. For example, town accountant's office, we want everything you got in there. Town treasurer, nah, no, you can't do those kind of things, all right? So, but I'm sure we can work something out that will be manageable by departments, reasonable.
I mean, clearly, you know, I understand the need for the safeguarding of the assets. I think the other potential unintended consequences, how do we manage when there are changes in that inventory? So, basically, we're talking about inventorying assets versus maintaining fixed asset records, so I wanna make, I wanna make sure that everybody understands the distinction. So, your fixed assets are the things that you've gotta depreciate, with the exception of the land that the town owns. So, the financial statements only recognize those assets that we're effectively depreciating and that meet the definition of a fixed asset. So, I believe the definition here is anything of five thousand dollars or greater in value, and anything with at least a useful life, a useful life of at least one year, something that we can actually depreciate. Anything less than that five thousand dollars, now, now we're talking about inventory. So, we wanna inventory the podium, we wanna inventory the chairs here in the room, we wanna inventory the desk, which is perfectly fine. But I think, again, you end up having an extensive inventory of the other thing, of the other items that you own, and who's to say what has value and what doesn't have value? I mean, the biggest fear now, for, I would think for any business, including a municipality, is eBay, Amazon, and Craigslist, and that this stuff now shows up effectively in a black market. Now, I don't know how much of a black market there is for used, you know, office chairs and whatnot, but that's really what your concern is, is that stuff's gonna start walking away. Now, I think the things that, and again, I think one of the reasons why Valerie is coming to you with reconsideration on that threshold are for things that have true value, that iPad, that iPad, that laptop. But there are things that are probably specialized equipment that would only be useful to the fire department, and there's probably nothing on an ambulance or a fire truck, with the exception of maybe an axe or a shovel, you know, just some basic tool. Everything on that vehicle probably costs at least two hundred dollars. You know, the things that you can actually, anything that would actually not be permanently affixed to that vehicle probably has a value of at least two hundred dollars.
We actually did a fixed asset inventory review of the fire department one time, and what we found was, other than, and we didn't look at the big fire trucks and that, because, you know, it's part of the truck. But there were cameras and things of that nature that had value, that were, I'll say portable.
Yes.
And so, maybe a better approach is that departments have inventories, but they also, the department heads understand what a fixed asset list is, and that fixed asset list would be the kinds of things you're talking about. But within their own department, they could have an inventory that they would use to control their own stuff.
Absolutely, and I would think your insurance provider is probably insisting on that as well. And one of the suggestions that I made at the meeting would be for folks to take their iPhones or to take those cameras and actually photograph what the insurance company will absolutely recommend that, so that in the event you have the thousand-year flood that wipes out the fire department, you can at least document to the insurance company exactly the contents of the building that you need to have placed.
I remember that discussion, 'cause I said, I've actually done that in my home.
Yeah.
And you store the photos off-site, but if you have a fire or disaster, you can prove you actually owned whatever.
The other thing, do we distill any of Valerie's, no, one of the things that Valerie is considering, or has asked for your consideration on is is some type of technology that will help to document the inventory, either through, primarily through a tagging system. I actually did some research on the WASP system that Valerie had researched as well, and it looks like a fantastic system, but it'll, the nice thing about it is it'll help document everything sort of simultaneously, so it's not being done in sort of piecemeal. From what I could see from the software, not only can we put a tag on it, but we can actually take a picture of it simultaneously, and it will capture data without having to do a lot of manual data entry on that asset record, if you will.
We had a system at UMass that also, when we actually wanted to go out and do a review like we did way back when, we had scanners, and we just walked by, and it did all that kind of stuff that you're talking about. And when you were all done, you printed out your list, and you had the basic list to begin with, and you knew what wasn't gone. So, then it was a question, what did we do with the, what piece of equipment or whatever?
So, when I worked for the state, we had a similar thing, but we couldn't scan it like that, every asset was tagged.
Right.
So, I brought this up a while ago, and I was concerned about, not that I think anybody's taking anything, but the town residents need to know that we're keeping track of the stuff that their tax dollars are paying for. So, I think it's important that we monitor everything. I am personally willing to change the figure from two hundred to a higher figure, but I don't want it to go too high, that we're eliminating a lot of, eliminating iPads and stuff like that.
Well, so that's, my suggestion is to raise the threshold, but to treat electronics separately. That all mobile devices, like an iPad, like we've got iPads in the ambulances, we have iPads in the cruiser, we have town-issued cell phones, those go on automatically regardless of value, because those would be cataloged through the WASP system or something similar. So, my thought is to sort of break these out, and you'd raise the threshold for everybody, but treat the electronics separately, and I think that's something totally doable. And I do not find that to be a burden on any of the departments regardless.
So, was it just the fire department, I wasn't at the last department head meeting.
Well, he brought it up, like, everything in my department is over two hundred dollars, Valerie, this is.
Highway would be difficult department, simply because they've got so much stuff.
Right, right, like, you said police too, right? Yeah, so those are the three, all the, you know, that I can think of that have a lot of equipment.
And especially highway, they would have inventory moving in and out, because they get parts to fix things, and they, so they're, you know, I call it their stock, would fluctuate.
He actually does have a list, because you mentioned insurance, I'm working on this for insurance purposes, so I have his list. So, he's in a good, in a good spot, but like cataloging everything on an ambulance, cataloging everything on a fire, you know, all the hose, the axes, the shovels, it was just a little extensive, and the police chief didn't complain, but I think, not that Chief McGee complained either, but he didn't mention anything, but I think it would, he would share in that experience, that it was just too much. So, I am seeking for you to raise the threshold. I kinda wanna go to five thousand, but I'm a little scared, I think that's too much, so I was thinking a thousand, one thousand?
An inventory list, I think five thousand is too high. I mean, 'cause now we're trying, crossing that threshold between an inventory and a fixed asset record.
Right, right.
And I think a thousand dollars is reasonable, I don't think five hundred dollars is necessarily unreasonable. Again, I think it's, how much value do you wanna place on the, everything that you've purchased is an expense to the town. You know, we're not in the business of, we're not buying raw materials and producing anything. So, everything that we own, we're not selling regularly on the open market. Not to say that everything that isn't in here doesn't have some, you know, some value to it, but again, I think the unintended consequence is what happens when there's turnover in that, I mean, I don't know, I don't think that this stuff turns over regularly, but your inventory list can store it, not a hand after a while, the ins and the outs, especially, I would say, probably more the ins than the outs. But it's not a bad thing, I mean, it does hold the departments accountable, so that when they are spending money, there's a reason for why they're doing it. Why do you need another table, why do you need another chair, why do you need another laptop?
So, I'm glad you said that, I think what I'm struggling with is the last inventory that I did on the board with Selectman Goulart. We ended up finding out from doing a site visit and actually doing, you know, with a checklist and going through the list, my concern is more, the, yes, we wanna track everything, obviously, anything of quote-unquote "value," whatever that may be. It is subjective, so whatever the board would determine that to be. My concern, in addition to that, is also that I feel like keeping track of stuff is also to help guide, like, okay, no, we do have that, we don't need to order another one, because when we did our inventory check, we found that there were a lot of, there were a lot of the same thing. Yeah, there were a lot of, like, I can't even give an example, but there clearly was not a close eye on, okay, we already have that particular item, we don't need to go out and buy another one. So, I think that we need to keep that in mind too, that that's another reason why we track things. It's not just, it's not just that things disappear, it's that it helps us know what we have to guide, like, if we need to order something else.
And the other thing we found was, so there's this item, and it's supposed to be located in this facility, and when we got there, it wasn't there, well, where is it? Well, we've got it, and it was a matter of somebody had taken it out of one station and used it and didn't return it to that station. And it was found, and it was returned where it's supposed to be. But it's also knowing, where is the stuff? It didn't disappear, but, you know, and it's just, that's just part of the control of moving the equipment around, you know?
So, it's not, for those departments that were thinking about, you know, changing the threshold because it would be sort of burdensome for them, I just want them to know it's not that we want to micromanage what's in your department, it's not anything like that. I think we just need to be mindful, based on prior experience, of the possibility of having a lot of duplication of items that might, may or may not be necessary.
It's also a good plan, you know, when you look at highway equipment, you're like, wow, all my trucks are from the eighties, maybe we should consider a, you know, annual, I'm just making this up, this is not true, but like, if all of the.
They need a new truck?
Right, no, I'm not saying, but like, if everything is sort of in this one era, you know, we don't wanna have to pay for everything all at once again, you wanna phase it out so the burden isn't hit all at once. So, that's, it's a helpful gauge of what you have, what you need to replace, and what may be coming down the pike, you know, five, seven years down the road.
I'm really glad, I hadn't thought of it from that perspective, that is a really good point, is that knowing exactly what you have, and when it, you know, sort of when you bought it and when the product is from, can help you have a better idea of, okay, it's getting a little old, in two years, we know we're gonna have this big-ticket item that we need to replace, so it allows for better planning for that particular department.
And our five-year plans that started a year ago are continuing to roll forward five years, because we know some of them are not gonna occur probably within five years. So, that five-year out there keeps moving every year forward as we, one drops off. So, exactly what you're talking about is important.
So, I think, if I may, I think what the board needs to decide is, are we gonna, I guess, what number are, is the board comfortable with having that threshold be?
I'm comfortable with moving it up to five hundred dollars. I know two hundred dollars was an interest that I had, but it may be too low, so I'm leaning towards five hundred, excluding electronics.
So, if we do the five, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if we do the five hundred dollar threshold that you're, so I haven't given my opinion, I'm just going with that. If we do the five hundred dollar threshold, then are we, obviously, I think those three departments that we're discussing would still come back and say, it's still a bit onerous on us, now we're spending a lot of our time. So, are we gonna exempt, are we gonna have a different threshold for those three departments, a higher threshold? Is that what you were saying?
Wait a minute, wait, we gotta, we gotta separate this. The five hundred dollar number, I believe we're talking about inventory value. Fixed asset is something else, so the five hundred is the local department inventory, okay? The asset value, which is the kind of stuff you depreciate and you report, that's another thing. So, what you're describing now is inventory control within the department. What I was gonna suggest is, since we brought this up at a department head meeting, we take it to the January meeting, which isn't that far away, and say, we discussed it, and say to them, the three departments that we're really looking at, because of the amount of material and stuff they have, and explain to them, local department inventory, and let's say we use the five hundred, how do you feel about that? Okay, you feel it gives you enough control, you feel it's gonna be too time-consuming and whatever? And if you do, give us some information. And then we talk about the fixed assets reportable on a financial statement, which, that stuff is out there anyhow, and they've gotta do it. So, I'm just thinking maybe since it came up at the meeting and there was some concern about, nobody wants to spend their time running their department, doing inventory, so.
That.
Yeah, but once it's done, and then you start, you know, obviously, if you're buying new stuff, you're gonna answer.
And since we personally don't get involved in that, and the only reason Dr. Z and I were involved in another, the other selectmen, there were three selectmen involved in this, it was a, it was an exercise, because I've had to, I had to do it at the university, and I says, hey, let's do a random fixed asset inventory review, and we did it, okay? And so, it was, like you say, once it's established, it's just a matter, but since there was concern about the value, maybe we should just ask it one more time, 'cause we're only a couple of weeks away from that department head meeting, you know? And by the time we have our first.
Selectman's meeting.
Selectman's meeting, we may have it there, that we could resolve it.
How do you feel about that, Dr. Z, because most likely you won't be able to be at that department head meeting?
Oh, I'm okay with that, I just.
We can report back to you.
Yeah, that's totally fine, I just wanna, I think, is this one of your, one of your goals, did we make that part of it?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, it's actually accomplished, because we've got it on paper, we're working it out, so I'm not worried.
I've moved on to the next goal, okay? No, I have no, I have no issue with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for considering that, though.
Oh, I do have one, I'm sorry, so this isn't actually about what the threshold should be, but it is related to the asset tracking procedure. What, I don't know how to phrase this, so, to your point that you were talking about, Mr. LaViolette, so, when the inventory changes, or this, I don't know, expensive asset ends up being auctioned off in a new one purchase, who is updating that information?
The two of us, actually, so I, so if it's like a vehicle, I update, because chances are you've insured that vehicle, so that's on my list as well. And then also the town accountant has a list.
Okay, I wasn't sure, 'cause we had really discussed.
In the case of the, right.
Would it be the department kind of loosely keeping track and updating things, or would it be?
So, I know that the fire chief keeps, keeps track of his own separate fire list, just because of my workings with it, I know that he does that, and I know that the police have a system, I'm sure Tom does as well, and now that he has administrative staff, everything's getting kind of in spreadsheets and organized. So, I know that they're monitoring what they have, and they're very knowledgeable when I say, whose utility trailer is this? So, they're on top of it.
Sure.
I, we're, one could call that duplication of work, but in this instance, I think it's important.
I just wanna make sure, because based on our experience, Selectman Goulart, I think one thing we learned from our venture into.
Inventory.
Inventory, was that you're only as good as the, the list is updated? So, I just wanna make sure that, because it would be pointless if we weren't obviously keeping up with the list, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the vehicles are super updated, because when we switched insurance, they had to be, so we're in a good spot in vehicles.
The big stuff is easy, everybody sees it, it's the stuff that's easily concealed, if you don't see, the laptops, the phones, the radios, the tools, especially the hand tools, yeah, but that's, that's where you, all the stuff that would be, one of the biggest fears, I don't, I don't wanna belabor the point, I don't wanna take up too much time in the meeting, but one of my fears against CFO of the town of Bellingham was what goes on at the DPW with all of the road, with all the materials that are purchased and then basically warehoused on-site. What keeps anybody from pilfering from a sand pile, from a salt pile? Very, I mean, quite frankly, very little, without having some physical barrier. And, you know, what are your charges on your assets, whether they're, whether they're recognized for fixed asset purposes in your financial statements, or they're recognized simply because we spent money on them and we wanna know what we own? You know, that's your charge, you know, is the safeguarding of those assets. We don't want any unauthorized use of those, we don't want stuff walking away via the employees, and we wanna know that there are safeguards in place over those assets, you know, that either we have physical barrier or we have restrictions on to what they could be used for. Important, very, you know, critical internal controls.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we place, review and discuss the asset tracking procedure at our next meeting, if we have the info, and that we discuss at the next department head meeting, department inventories, and ask about, discuss minimum values, and also the fixed asset inventory minimum values, just so that they understand there's a distinction.
Just a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
I actually had to count, it was funny, we called it the herds and flocks, because we had livestock in Amherst, so I had to know how many horses, and we had dairy cows, and, but I had to know the count, to make sure none of them disappeared that hadn't been accounted for. They had a breed stallion that we tracked, it was worth a lot of money.
Okay.
I have an update on the elementary school, middle school driveway. So, the preliminary plan has been completed, and we're trying to set up a meeting of the minds on, right now, I'm looking at January eighth, but I haven't heard back from everybody yet, but the first, I call it the first week of January, 'cause it's the first real business week of January. So, that is moving forward. The next item, I'm very happy to report. So, we had, as I think everybody is aware, we did apply for an ADA planning grant to help us in a self-evaluation and a transition plan to achieve ADA compliance town-wide on our properties, buildings and recreational places. We received thirty thousand dollars to do that. We also, we partnered with the school to do the outdoor classroom walkway, which did come up at town meeting in an event that we didn't get the grant, we had that as a Plan B, and we got thirty-five hundred dollars to take care of that walkway as well. So, about thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three five, in ADA funds from the Office of Disability.
That's great, that's the greenhouse, right?
Oh, they ended up getting it, oh, see, so we won't, so those funds won't be expended, okay?
It'll be closed out, and, you know, as, as long as everything goes to plan, we won't do that right away, but once the project's completed.
That's great.
It'll close out and fall to free cash, so, thank you for, you know, Ashley Fallon, Jonathan Gales, Chairman Pacico, you know, for really putting that together, and of course, the Office on Disability.
Good work, I know you've been talking about that during last budget season, as a matter of fact, we were talking about that grant, and.
And now we got the grant, so, we'll hire somebody and.
I'll go out to bid, and we will hire a, a company to help assist us in that and get it done.
All right, five-year plan's still alive, I like it.
Community compact cabinet.
So, yes, I, hopefully, we can, once that second round comes out, I'd actually like to name ADA compliance as a best practice for us so that we can get some other opportunities as well, so, anyway, that's it, that's my report.
Well, thank you for your work on that grant also, you did an excellent job on the grant application. All business, vote on update to LA five classification.
So, at last week's public hearing on the classification of property and the setting of the tax rate, we presented, or Carol and I presented to the board, Form LA five, which documents effectively what the tax rate's going to be by property and what excess taxing capacity is. In the process of submitting that paperwork to the DOR last week, there was an error discovered, an error which was unfortunately on my part. There were two dead exclusion votes related to the school properties for the roofs. Um, there were, there were two debt exclusion votes related to the school properties for the roofs that were missing from, uh, the levy limit calculation. So, what, by, by basically placing those two debt exclusions into the form, it increased the town's excess taxing capa, or excess levy capacity. It had absolutely no impact on the tax rate that was settled on last week, because we didn't do any increased spending. So, basically, there were two levy limits. There's your levy ceiling, which is basically your last year's tax limit, your two-and-a-half percent growth, I'm sorry, your two-and-a-half percent calculation in due growth. That's your levy limit. The exclusions get you up to your maximum allowable levy. But we had already determined what our spending was going to be before the error was discovered. So, ergo, it had no impact on, on the tax rate whatsoever.
So, the maximum changed, but we weren't near that, so that didn't impact us.
You don't need all that money to take care of what you voted on spending.
So, what's that new levy limit?
So, your new levy, your, your excess levy capacity is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which is where it's been reflected historically anyway.
Right, right.
And, most of it, most of that is the result of those two debt exclusions being added to, uh, the calculation.
Very good. Thanks for providing us with the information.
So, if, uh, if you folks sign off on that, uh, once we submit with, uh, Carol, L R I, we'll have to resubmit the LA five with your signatures on it. Um, the Department of Revenue is ready to push the button to approve the tax rate. So, it should have, it should be approved tomorrow.
Should we, should we take a vote on this then? Acceptance, uh?
Just acknowledging that you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, acknowledge the change in the LA five due to the debt exclusion votes, uh, mentioned by the town accountant, uh, and recognize the new levy limit, uh, the new limit, uh, that we are under the levy by approximately six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And that we sign this form and get it off to Boston as soon as possible.
Just a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, abstention, the ayes.
I'm sorry, under discussion, I do have a question. Now, the tax bills have to be out by the end of the month.
Correct.
All right, and so they've gotta get any, uh, changes and all those kind of things. I understand the new software in the sewer department is going to handle some of this. This will be the first time it's run, so everyone's got their fingers crossed that that's gonna work. Is there, has anyone looked at cash flow relative to if the bill, for some bills, are late for some reason? I just mention this because this, this is ancient history. Um, we, initially, we pay taxes twice a year, and when we were on that schedule, there would be times when the regional district needed their assessment, and we didn't have the money. And the unwritten policy was, going way back to the days of Frank Rogers, that, and in Rehoboth, too, that if a member town, uh, was shot when it was time to pay your assessment, it would be the member town who did short-term borrowing in anticipation of tax revenue. So, we went to the quarterly payment. So, my only concern is, and I got my fingers crossed, but if the bills are late, it's just, I'm just stating publicly that there is that understanding unwritten, but it's been there since the district was formed, that if by any chance, cash flow is tight, and, um, the town of Dayton's tax bill's revenue is coming in a little slowly, uh, it, the onus would be on the, in the member town that was, uh, I'll say, tight with cash at the time. Quite frankly, the history has been that Dayton has always paid this early, uh, to help out, uh, Rehoboth. And the whole point was, we don't want the regional district to borrow short-term because both towns are not paying for it, and if it's one town that is running, uh, slow on, on receipts, that town should do borrowing in anticipation. So, I just mentioned that. Hopefully, it's not gonna happen.
Hopefully, it should not happen.
Right.
From what I understand, there are a couple adjustments that will need to be made to the tax. I mean, Mary can speak to it directly. But, as far as I'm aware, the, the valuation file or the, the assessment file that the assessors have prepared is ready to be transferred over to Mary, so that it can be transferred off to Mary.
I know there are, there are liens that, there are few liens, like the sewer things, that she has to take care of, I'll call it manually.
Yeah.
But I also know that the next payment coming to the regional district around the beginning of February is over two million. It's a biggie, so.
I don't see cash flow being a problem, you know, from a general ledger standpoint, I don't see cash flow being an issue, but Mary can definitely address that better than I can.
Right.
The forms.
For the LA five.
Oh, yeah, I, it's, we should have it in the packet, but I have an extra one if you need it.
Where do they sign up here?
They can just sign anywhere on the.
Oh, they just sign in here?
Yeah, you used to, you used to, you used to be able to sign it electronically through the gateway, which is how we submit this, but anywhere on the bottom of the form is fine right now.
So, we can just give this to you tonight?
Yeah.
And.
And we'll get it off to, we'll get it off to the U M O.
Good, good.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I, I would just request that if, uh, that you and Mary, uh, monitor that tack, that cash flow thing, and so that if there's anything that looks, uh, whatever the board knows about it before it happens, or is. Thank you.
The town has the good fortune of not having a lot of existing debt service. That, that's the other thing that would really impact, you know, if you had a lot of bonds coming due, they can come due January and June. Some communities, you know, manage it so that it comes in October and, and March, but, um, that, that would be the, that would be the real budget buster in terms of cash flow.
Frank Rogers was the treasurer, and he held that position for, uh, many, many years. He would always let me know ahead of time, the selectmen signed last night, come by and get the check, and I would pick it up and take it, uh, to the district treasurer on my way to work.
Well, thank you, Chris, for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Listen, thank you.
New business. Review hiring policy. So, we have a new, uh, policy that we're gonna do the first reading tonight on the hiring policy. I'm gonna read some of it, and I wanna give it to you to read some, if it's okay, then perhaps Nancy. So, I wanna read the first two pages and a little bit of the third page, because it continues. Okay, so this is a hiring policy. Purpose and scope. The purpose of this policy is to establish consistent and equitable procedures for the recruitment and selection of qualified candidates for all regular positions in the town of Dayton. Applicability. The Board of Selectmen serve as the appointing authority for the Animal Control Officer, Administrative Assistant, Building Commissioner, Counselor and Agent Director, Executive Assistant, Fire Chief, Health Agent, Highway Superintendent, Highway Superintendent, Police Chief, Town Accountant, Town Administrator, and Veterans Agent. The Board of Selectmen also approves all hires for positions that fall under any collective bargaining agree, agreement. This policy applies to recruitment and staffing of all full-time and part-time compensated positions in the town of Dayton, excluding elected officials and employees of the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District. Positions covered by a collective bargaining agreement, brought to see CBA, are subject only to those portions of the policy that are not distinctly regulated by the CBA. Hiring pro, processes for the fire and police department differ from the procedures laid out in this policy. To the extent permitted by law, individual employment agreements, parentheses, new, updated or extensions, unparentheses, entered into after the effective date of this policy, but employees who are subject to the policy must follow all the provisions of this policy. This policy is intended to be consistent with any and all applicable federal, state and local laws and regulations. If any part of this policy is inconsistent with the law, that part of, that part of the policy shall be considered invalid, and the remaining positions, provisions of the policy shall be construed so as to be consistent with the law policy. A, the primary goal of the town of Dayton in the employment process is to fill vacancies within the most qualified, with the most qualified candidates available. The town will adhere to the principles of equal opportu, employment opportunity, while being mindful of the importance of a diverse workforce in a vibrant, thriving workplace. B, the town policy is to comply with the American with Disabilities Act, the town's commitment to ADA compliance and inclusion for all in a comparable state laws in all phases of the hiring, including making reasonable combinations to enable applications with disabilities to obtain access to town facilities for the purpose of seeking employment and to hire to perform the essential functions of the position. The hiring procedure outlined in this title, in the title of this policy section provisions shall be followed in order to appoint both internal and external candidates to vacant positions in the town service. D, it is the policy of the town to post and or advertise all vacant paid positions. E, department heads are required to act consistently with the policy, with this policy, and shall ensure this policy is implemented with their respective departments. F, in the event of an error or violation of this policy, either intentional or unintentional, the town administrator must be immediately informed. He slash she will identify and implement the proper corrective measures. A violation of this policy, whether intentional or unintentional, shall not change this policy nor set a precedent in any future applications of this policy. G, all hiring recommendations by a town board or commission are subject to the open meeting law, meetings law, where applicable. Specifically regarding selection committees and posting requirements, please see the town clerk for assistance or inquiries. Provisions. A, department heads, as well as boards and commissions, must follow procedures in place and seek approval for the, from the Board of Selectmen to hire and or fill vacancies. B, department heads must review the current position description on file to ensure it is current and accurate for posting and or advertisement purposes. They shall work with the town administrator if job descriptions, updates are needed, which must be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Job descriptions for union employees must also have approval from the respective unions. C, posting and advertising. One, the position description presently on file with the town administrator is the official description of the duties and responsibilities of the position. Two, the department head will work with the town administrator to prepare a job posted, based, posting based on the official posting description, grade, and salary information. All postings and advertisements shall be in a format that will include at least the following information. A, position's title, B, salary or salary range, C, minimum qualifications, D, department slash location of job, E, brief description of essential duties, F, address and or email to submit application, G, materials required for application, H, E E O slash ADA statement, I, deadline for filing applications, J, any information deemed necessary by the Board of Selectmen and or the town administrator. Three, all posters must be completed using the format available in the town administrator's office. Four, all applications must be submitted through the town administrative office. Five, the town administrator shall review each job posting for accuracy and consistency with the pol, with this policy and the position description. Final approval is required by the Board of Selectmen prior to posting. If updates to a job posting or position description are needed, after prior approval from the Board of Selectmen, the updates shall require approval. And six, once reviewed and approved by the Board of Selectmen, the department head or the town administrator shall post and or advertise the job openings in appropriate locations, including the town website. Qualified internal applications are encouraged to apply.
To the applicant, sorry.
Internal, okay. Qualified internal applicants.
And I think the next block of text is supposed to be seven.
Is that correct? It's supposed to be seven?
I think so, because we did this on track changes, and sometimes, um, you accidentally.
I think I accidentally deleted the number seven.
Okay. So, seven, if the position is to be advertised externally, which shall be decided by the Board of Selectmen in consultation with the town administrator, the department head shall work with the town administrator to prepare the text and content of the external advertisement. The town administrator shall review for appropriateness and consistency. Once the final posting and or description is approved by the Board of Selectmen, the department head or town administrator shall place the advertisement in the appropriate outlet, such as newspapers, trade journals, town or other recruitment websites, social media and or other medium that meets the needs. Generally, all costs for advertising will be the responsibility of the department with the vacancy. Could you take over D for me, please?
Sure. Employment applications. One, all applicants shall have the opportunity to self-identify as having protected group status by filling a self-identification form. The decision as whether or not to identify is up to the applicant. The self-identification form should be forwarded to the town administrator. However, as part of the town's commitment to equal employment opportunity, hiring departments may request information regarding forms. Two, no applicant shall be considered without a complete application package, which may include an employment application, resume, cover letter, and any other applicable material or materials as defined or indicated in the job posting. Three, applicants for positions that require degrees, licenses and or certifications must provide copies or proof of those materials, or shall provide written authorization to the town administrator, allowing for verification of such information prior to beginning employment. Four, all application materials excluding protected self-group identification shall be kept in the official posting file in the town administrator's office. And five, a copy of the selected candidate's resume, cover letter, award letter, and application shall be kept in the candidate's personnel file in the town treasurer slash town collector's office. Is that, is four and five correct?
Um, actually, as I'm reading four, I'm a little nervous about that. I'm, so, once somebody's hired, everything goes in the personnel file?
So, I think what we should do for the final version is com.
Combine those.
Yep, and take out town administrator.
Well, unless we say, during the hiring process, I'll applic.
I don't think we need to distinguish, because in the end, they're all gonna go in the town personnel file in the town treasurer, uh, collector's office.
Combine, four and five, and remove town administrator's office.
So, to my colleagues, they're, we're not gonna keep the materials in two different places, like one part of the material.
Only one official file.
Exactly, exactly. E, screening and interviewing. One, in the event of a vacancy below a department head in any office under the authority of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, department head, and any other personnel deemed necessary by the town administrator, in consultation with the Board of Selectmen, will screen resumes based on criteria in the job description and posting. Two, department head shall work with the town administrator to, A, develop standard selection questions and use the same questions for all candidates. B, select qualified candidates for interview and send a letter or email to candidates whom were not selected for an interview in a timely fashion. C, notify candidates selected for a second interview by either telephone or email. D, select candidates for final interviews, contact references where appropriate, and conduct final interviews. One, interviews of finalists conducted by town boards or commissions are subject to the open meeting law. E, select final candidates. One, when filling a department head vacancy, finalist candidates will be recommended to the Board of Selectmen for final interviews. Two, ideally, there will be no fewer than two candidates for final interviews. And three, the Board of Selectmen, in consultation with the town administrator, shall appoint a department head by majority or unanimous vote. F, department head shall review potential job offer with town administrator. G, notify unsuccessful candidates by telephone, email, or mail. H, and I promise, there's a flow chart attached. It's very easy to follow. It's a little tough with the text. H, all communication to the candidates or others asking about the hiring process will be made through the town administrator's office and responded to by the, by either the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen Executive Assistant. I, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint to fill the vacancy and approve the job offer based on the recommendation of the department head and the town administrator. Three, in the event of a vacancy of a department head, the Board of Selectmen may opt to appoint a screening committee to conduct interviews, to which the town administrator shall be a member. Screening committees are subject to the open meeting law, and interviews must be conducted at a duly posted meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty A. The screening committee shall submit no fewer than two candidates to be interviewed by the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting. Four, if the board declines to appoint a screening committee, the town administrator shall work with appropriate personnel in consultation with the Board of Selectmen to conduct interviews utilizing the process discussed in this policy. I think that should be set forth in this policy. Five, for positions below the level of department head, the town administrator, department head, and any other personnel deemed necessary by the town administrator shall conduct interviews and provide a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Five, six, excuse me, all union positions are ratified by vote of the Board of Selectmen, including those in the fire and police departments. F, oh, do you wanna, you wanna switch? I'm happy to.
Mr. Golat, you.
Okay. Uh, F, job offers. For starting salary, the department head shall not make a commitment until prior written approval is obtained from the town administrator. Two, the town administrator shall con, shall consult with the Board of Selectmen prior to any initial or final job offer or starting or final salary in order to ensure consistency and compliance with his existing town personnel policies, practices, precedents and or procedures. Three, all job offers are conditional, as prospective employees may be required to submit to and pass certain required physicals and checks, including Cory screenings or bond requirements to be conducted by the town administrator, department head, or the state. requirements be, to be conducted by the town administrator, department head, or the state. For positions subject to mass DOT regulations, a pre-employment drug test will be ordered. Four, final job offers, award letters, shall be communicated in writing and shall contain certain minimum information. A, the town administrator shall be consulted in utilizing the standard letter. B, the board of selectmen or the town administrator shall sign the final job offer slash award letters. Five, town of Dayton service shall be recognized for the purposes of longevity or vacation accrual. G, hiring documentation. One, the following documentation shall be compiled by the department head and forwarded to the town administrator prior to the employee's first day of work for inclusion in the employee's personnel file, which shall be kept in the town treasurer slash town collector's office. A, payroll change form. B, conditional job offer letter. C, employment application, resume, and cover letter. D, reference letters and/or telephone reference check reports. E, any other form required for the purposes of a background check, if applicable. F, signed acknowledgement forms. H, orientation and training. During the first week of employment, the employee must meet with the town administrator and/or the town treasurer, town collector, to discuss benefits and retirement. The employee shall be required to complete and/or submit any and all required documentation to the town treasurer slash town collector, or in certain instances, the town clerk. Two, new employees shall also be required to sign acknowledgement forms for the following employee-related town policies, as well as any new policies that may be adopted by the board of selectmen in the future. Anti-harassment policy. A, anti-harassment policy. B, social media policy. C, computer use and electronic communications rules and regulations. D, personnel records policy. E, drug-free workplace policy. F, tobacco and smoke-free workplace policy. G, receipt of conflict of interest law. Do we wanna say anything there about they gotta complete the training? Just giving them the law doesn't.
Well, yes, as a state law, we all have to take that training.
Right, I'm just wondering, receipt of conflict of interest law and statutory requirements for training, something like that.
I would even put that, um, put that as its own thing.
Okay.
Where was that selectmen go on?
H two, G, but like.
The last page, where it says receipt of conflict law, you give them the law, but you've, people who haven't worked in municipal won't be familiar with the fact that you actually have to take a training thing online. Same receipt of conflict, so we need to.
Got you, and training.
I'm gonna add three.
Okay, thank you.
Like, like a.
I got it.
And then, we'll, we'll reference the appropriate master.
Okay. G, benefits. Non-union benefited employees hired after the approval of this policy shall be provided the following benefits. Accrual of sick time at a rate of one day per month of actual work performed, for a total of twelve days a year. B, sick leave is cumulative from one year to the next, with a maximum accumulation of one hundred twenty-five days. C, employees shall earn no more than five weeks' vacation during their tenure with the town. D, employees shall receive a total of three personal days each year. They are not cumulative from year to year, and they expire at the end of the fiscal year. Two, union employees shall receive the benefits afforded to them in their respective collective bargaining agreements.
If I can just bring you back to page five, item F five, about town of Dayton service shall be recognized for the purposes of longevity or vacation accrual. I added that in there for discussion purposes mostly. Some contracts, some union contracts, um, recognize years of service to the town of Dayton for vacation, but not longevity. I think that's sort of strange, I'm just looking for some clarification, or if you wanna keep that, or if you wanna eliminate that bit entirely and not reference it, and then just relate it to the appropriate union contract. Just, just rely upon the language in the collective bargaining agreement associated with the employee.
Before we discuss that, was there any other changes? Cause we might have a little discussion on that part. Did, did anyone have anything else?
No.
Any other part? I did have a couple things. We discussed minor changes, let me just find them. So, under policy A, the equal employment opportunity form, which is part of this policy, it is, uh, it's in the back, almost like an addenda. I actually have a different version of the form, which I'll present when we do the second reading, but it's really an affirmative action and an equal employment opportunity self-identification form. I took the word out of affirmative action when I wrote the first draft, because I was not sure at the time if that applied, that term affirmative action applied to like municipalities and towns. So, obviously, it does. So, I guess what I wanted to ask everyone is, do we want to put that term back in? It doesn't change anything on the form, because it's the exact same form, it's just I took that term out.
So, where on the page, what page?
It's, uh, one second. It's under policy A, so it's two, at the bottom of one, kind of top of two. So, the way it would read is, "The town will adhere to the principles of equal opportunity and affirmative action while being mindful of the importance of a diverse workforce in a vibrant, thriving workplace." Or, actually, I think I added that second line, cause I took affirmative action out, the term, so we could just have equal employment opportunity and affirmative action, period.
I'm okay with that.
I don't have a problem. So, strike while being mindful?
Yep, that whole, last of the sentence.
Period after action, strike the rest, okay.
Um, and, one second, colleagues, I just wanted to see if there was anything else I had. We're gonna combine those two points. We're gonna add the and training to receipt of conflict interest law and training.
Where's that? That's gonna be its own section.
That's under orientation and training.
Page six?
Yep, last page.
And it would, we're gonna add a three. And then, this G benefits has to change to I. It's a typo.
So, I just wanted to, so, the town administrator and I went back and forth on specific language we wanted to have for the hiring of department heads. I did use a template when I wrote this from the town of Norwood, but I, but when I wrote it, I tried to keep in mind kind of what we're already doing in the town of Dayton. And so, what I had noticed in thinking back is, since the town administrator has been here, she has really, for non-department head hires, and I'm not, not talking about the union, for non-department head, non-union hires, she really has been working with the department heads and kind of forming a committee, um, and doing those screening interviews. So, I wanted to distinguish that from when we go to hire a department head, like we just hired the town accountant. We had an initial screening process, right, that the finance committee chairman was in on, as well as the town treasurer, collector. And then, they forwarded us the finalists, and then, we did our interviews. So, does the board feel comfortable with keeping that procedure or precedent in place as we, you know, may select new department heads at some point in the future?
I think it worked.
It does work.
It wasn't a, you know, it was successful, it's not, um, overly detailed, dragged out, whatever, it's pretty straightforward.
And I also wanted to point out one last thing, Mr. Chairman. All of the job offers are worked out between the town administrator and the department head, that job offer then always comes to the board of selectmen for that kind of final approval. So, I just wanted to point that out as well.
I like the, I like the part two also that was mentioned in here, that applicants will get some kind of a response. Applicants who are not the can, the successful candidate will get a response saying, you know, "Thank you for your application," and if we're gonna keep it on file, or whatever the plan is.
I think that's very important.
It is very important.
I, I just had a question. Where are we gonna put in that training for conflict of interest?
That's my question to you.
We're gonna add a second, we're gonna add item three, like, see how it says two, and then those are all the acknowledgements.
Oh, item three, okay.
Item three, and we're gonna reference the trainings.
So, are we removing G?
Nope.
No.
No, because that's still a signed acknowledgement. It's different, it's, here's the law.
Oh, oh, oh.
And you say, yep, I got it.
Okay, okay.
Then, what's also included, after you complete the, the training online as a certificate printed, and that goes in as well.
Got you, okay.
And then, I also, we're working on a workplace violence one, too, so we might end up having that at the same time, we might add that at a third reading, that that would also be one of the acknowledgement forms.
There is some language, Mr. Chairman, regarding ADA. I, I'm not sure if you wanted to, before we approved it on the third reading, run that by Mr. Gill.
Absolutely.
What?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, getting back to, I think it was you that brought it up, on the F, page five, uh, num, uh, job office, number five. Do we wanna take that out then? Because some contracts address that, but other contracts don't, and I'm not sure that. Page five, job office, number five, town of Dayton. I'm not sure exactly why that was in there, if it's.
I put it in for this discussion, because I find it weird to recognize years of service in one way and not another.
So, I think.
Like, I just, so I want to get guidance from you on where you fall on it, so I know what to do in the future.
How we recognize them in one way?
So, some contracts recognize town of Dayton service, so if you've worked for the town of Dayton, then you left, and then you came back, you're recognized for your vacation, what you get for vacation benefits, but not longevity, which would be a three percent bump between steps, or two percent in some contracts. It's just strange to me, you're recognizing years of service in one vein, but not another.
Goes back to almost a grievance.
Okay, don't talk about it now, then.
All right, I can, I can give you the details when we.
And I think I know already which one it is.
Yes.
So, I think we should probably strike this.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying right now, leave it for this moment. When we are in closed session, I can mention details, and if that's what you, you're gonna remember this. And then, um, we'll make a decision. I don't wanna pull this out yet, cause if you pull it out, and after decision, we should have left it in.
Yeah.
So, if we leave it there for now, we can always take it out on the next meeting, but since one member of the board is not aware what we're talking about, let's, let's just leave it for now.
All right, so I'm just gonna flag it.
Is there any further discussion on this?
No, I wanted to thank you for putting that in. I know when you had put it in, you put in note that it was really for discussion, but do you have, are you leaning one way or the other on it? Cause you didn't indicate.
Right, right, I, I'm not, I, I don't have a lot of energy about it, I mean, I, I wanna discuss it and see where it, where it came from, why it is, and what it means to change it.
Can I mention one other thing? And if it's a hot button thing, then I'll drop it.
Hot potato. I was just thinking that.
Do we also want to include any language, and maybe we don't for flexibility's sake, but we have been in a position where we've honored someone else's service from another town, and I think we just left it on, at a case-by-case basis, so I guess.
So, I thought about that.
Keep doing that?
When we crafted this, I thought about keep, like, putting it in, cause the whole point is to provide some sort of continuity and fairness. I actually think it's detrimental, so we can chat about that one-on-one, and then we'll, we'll chat with everything together. But I wanted to thank you for really picking this up and getting it off the ground, so that I could actually tackle and have this policy, so I appreciate that very much.
Okay, can I get the last word on it?
Of course.
Okay. I would just say, so I don't have a preference that we do or don't put that language in, but I would, I would hope that the board will act consistently, you know, procedurally going forward in that vein.
Absolutely. And if we can go back, if there's no more, this is Attorney Bill Solomon, and he is here to update us.
Thank you for being patient, sir.
I know.
No, thank you, I, I was, uh, I'm stoned, I'm a little lost, and, and, uh, two and a half hours.
Hope you had a good audio, but.
You didn't get caught in a whiteout.
Yeah, just otherwise, but, but thank you. May it come here?
Yes, absolutely.
And are we televised?
We are.
Okay, I thought so.
On the, the very cable that we are talking about. Before we kick off, I do wanna just clear up a misconception, I've heard from people in the past, and I've seen online, people think that by agreeing to these terms, we are somehow blocking out the competitor. That is not the case, that's not what this is. This is to allow the town the ability to broadcast, as we do, to your television sets through Comcast Channel nine and ninety-eight for the school. It is not preventing any other competitor from coming to Dayton, it is not, um, putting some sort of onus against anybody, it is just to get our government and educational work out there to you, the resident, so you know what's going on and can be informed. So, I just wanted to state that.
There is, no, for, for the people watching, we've looked into it extensively, there literally is no competitor, it is only Comcast here.
Well, FiOS isn't expanding, Horizon's not expanding, and TMLP.
TMLP will be very limited for Center Street and hopefully this campus, but the only public that would access it is the east part of Center Street, unfortunately.
So, we're now setting rates then?
No.
Comcast.
No, that's the other thing, this is not setting your cable subscription rate either. This is public access.
That is unfortunate, that is unfortunate.
That would be the correspondence in the next month, new rates.
Well, thank you, very good to be here, I appreciate it. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
You as well.
I should have worn my Christmas tie. So, William Solomon is special cable counsel, it's, it's great to be here, I've been working with the town, particularly with your town administrator, Mallory Ehrenstein, it's been, been involved hand-to-hand, and we wouldn't be where we are today if it wasn't for Mallory's work, informed by work she's done in other communities, and also at the state level, been very helpful to get the agreement, what we've reached, we believe, as a, agreement terms are agreed to, and we'll talk about, we're just not quite there, because the Comcast representative was very cooperative, very helpful. Bob Sullivan was appointed mayor of, of Brockton, so that he, he's been busy, and now he's transitioning onward. So, let me just begin with, you know, you, you know your town well, so I, 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 I'll just make the general point that in working across the Commonwealth in communities, when you see a community that has good community television, you see a community that works together, where people have more understanding of what's going on, less a sense that nothing goes on, or government doesn't even do things, where residents and community groups work together. So, you see a vast difference between communities that don't value, or have the dollars to have good, and, and, and volunteerism, to have good community programming, and those that do. And as you know, I, and I think, did you have a local paper that's closed? I'm not sure.
No, Gazette's still done, Gazette's still there.
But, but the challenge, of course, is, you know, newspapers are having a hard time, there are fewer reporters, there's less local coverage, there's less coverage of items that are positive and, and, as opposed to just sensational. So, community television, when, when run well, and you, on very limited funds, do an excellent job. But when run well, really brings a sense of community, and also helps the local economy. It allows people out there who have small businesses and services, even though you're not, you know, there's not a tremendous amount of business here, but there are people who have businesses, who have services. And by getting that word out, but let's say having a show where once a month it highlights a local business, who they are, what they do, it becomes more like, as I say, when I go in a conference, and I go to a hotel room, or an in-room, that, that has private or, or, or otherwise local community television, I know more about that community, half hour, a half hour of unpacking my bag than I do about communities around me. So, um, so the goal was to continue to build and strengthen pub, public access. So, the, um, the terms of the license that had been agreed to in principle, and we need to get the license finalized, and we have provided the draft license to Comcast, we provided a draft side agreement to Comcast, a draft senior discount letter, I think would be, would be agreed upon based on work we've done. So, where, where, where is Dayton now? Currently, the town receives one percent of the company's gross annual revenues, and currently Comcast is not including in gross annual revenues, uh, non-subscriber revenue. The, the most important part of non-subscriber revenue is advertising, it could be five, six percent of their revenues. Going forward, uh, under the new license, that one percent would go to three percent in year one, and then, as you know, cause you have license, would go to five percent, which is the maximum allowed under the Cable Act, um, for the remaining nine years. In addition, making clear, since before Comcast thought it was ambiguous, and it, it, it might have been based on discussions, the definition of gross annual revenue, it clearly includes non-subscriber revenue, and I think that's important, because as cable and video are tran, are transitioning, that. that, there's, the possibility that even cable would try to be more advertising-based, and you don't want to lose out on those revenues. The town, our feeling was, negotiating for the town, that revenue should include all revenue and shouldn't have, shouldn't have any deductions. In addition, under the current license, you subtracted from the one percent are the local, the, the state and local license fee of a dollar thirty a year. So you multiply that times your subscribers. Your subscribers are, at the end of two thousand eighteen, were two thousand three hundred and sixty-three. That's currently deducted from your license. That would continue to be deducted, but the difference is, it's deducted now, just as a matter of law, because when you're, after the first year, because when you're at five percent, that license fee counts as a franchise fee. So it takes up a little room, so when the company pays you that five percent, it's five percent minus that dollar thirty, the fifty cents a year to the town and eighty to the state. So in other words, the same deduction is there, but now it, it logically should be there because of that five percent cap. Over ten, looking at some, some revenue numbers, using a, maybe a somewhat modest, a hundred and five dollar per subscriber revenue, for cable only, a hundred and five dollars a month per subscriber, that's an estimate, it may be a little higher. The five percent franchise fee would come out to be a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars a year. Again, subtracting from that the license fee, which you also get. So that would be two thousand times one thirty, so, you know, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year. Now, the revenues are, are changing, as potentially, for different reasons. Some people may, maybe people who don't continue to get cable, although your, your, your subscriber numbers are, are, are good, and I believe that cable will remain strong in, in, in the near future. Changing to streaming is more challenging than you'd imagine. There's a lot of commercials, the cost-saving is great. So that I, I think in the foreseeable future, while, while there will be people who are looking at all alternatives, I think cable will, will remain stronger than people think. In addition, what will help Comcast have a strong program in Dayton is excellent community television. So now, the other number would be the capital number. The financial support is the PEG, Public, Public Educational and Government Operating Support, going from the three percent and then five percent for those, the next, the following nine years. In addition, that would be the capital number. Capital number, which was based on the tremendous work of your, your, your team here that operates cable, who I've met many times, and I'm bad on names, I apologize, but the gentleman does an excellent job, and with his assistant, we've met, and, there you go. And, and Mallory, we, we had a capital, a capital plan devised, in-house and, and with some assistance, and, and showed the need for, for PEG access equipment, cameras, editors, your computer equipment that now is used instead of formerly decks, to provide quality video service. The capital contribution would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the ten-year period. And that would be paid twenty-four thousand dollars in year one, and then we have twelve thousand dollars for the, for the next eight, eight, eight years. And the twenty-four thousand upfront, frankly, you probably needed more upfront, but we tried to balance in a negotiation with Comcast, not front-loading it too much, and there's some savings there also if you don't front-load it, and, and they don't put the money upfront. So the capital is excellent. The, the current license, I believe, had seventy thousand dollars in, in capital. Let me take a look. Sixty-one thousand dollars in capital, which was a one-time payment. This is a hundred and twenty thousand over the ten years. The video return, it's an area that the town administrator worked on quite a bit, and we discussed, and the question was whether to attach your senior care building that's quite close, and looking at potentially Comcast connecting that, but connecting that for video purposes only, because a Comcast video return would only connect the buildings for PEG access video, and would not connect it for data or for other purposes. And at the end of the day, we decided in the balance of, of negotiations, and to try to move it along in a timely way, with the representative moving on, not to include that in the license. Additionally, under, you may have read or heard about the recent FCC ruling, that, which will be under appeal, where the FCC has claimed that certain, they call in-kind contributions of a cable company should count to the franchise fee, so that if you had an additional video line that came to the town hall, there's an operating cost for that, and a tangential cost to the operating cost, that in theory, they could, they say, well, that should count to the franchise fee, and since you'll be at five percent going forward, that would subtract from what, that five percent payment. So the decision was, you know what, you've had a company who does a lot of work in town for the town and schools contract, look at that. The best option for the town is to build that on your own, have it for all your uses, not have to have dollars to subtract it from the franchise fee paid, paid to the town. So the remaining live, cable casting would come from town hall, but with an infusion of capital dollars, there are now, and your folks can discuss it, there are now, it's now equipment that allows for cable, cable casting, sending the signal back to the town hall where it would be picked up by, by Comcast, wirelessly or over the internet. You know, that's working a lot better. You wouldn't want it for your major building, but to be able to cable cast in most places in town with the remote equipment now is working very well. So you're going to have some dollars to put toward that remote equipment, again, which was, was being provided by, based on your in-house staff, and also by the camera company, Integrated Solutions Group, that came out, no cost, and worked on the capital plan with it, with your, 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 your town staff. The, the license fully protects the town. It doesn't allow either side to game the system going forward. It fully protects the town in a wide range of, of issues, public works issues, public way issues, insurance issues, indemnification issues. And I believe also, let me just take one look. The line extension policy, section three point two. On the current license, the line extension policy would require thirty dwelling units per mile, or proportion thereof.
I'm sorry. I just only gave you article six. So they, I only, for brevity's sake, I didn't pack it.
Yeah, because there's something that looks, you know, it's, 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 it can be important, but it's things that I developed for years and, and month to month. The one I'll point out is the density. Your current license says that if there are thirty homes per mile, or shorter, lesser number if it's a shorter distance, if it's aerial plant, or sixty homes per mile, if it's an underground plant, the company would have an obligation to extend the system. That's a difficult number to change, but what, what we did and have agreement on is that if there's underground, and the conduit is placed by someone other than Comcast, which is usually the case in a subdivision, that the density number is forty-five. So that, you know, potentially could help going forward in, in build-out in, 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 in the town. It's not clear, but it's a possibility. So if you happen to answer any questions, at this point, we've provided the license to Comcast. The representative, again, who couldn't be better, Bob Sullivan is moving on. We're hoping that he, he speaks and brings some, folks now or afterwards, to transition them, to make, you know, if there's not the documentation, make clear what was agreed to. He had to get approval to give the numbers he gave to us from, from his folks above him, so I'm, I'm sure that's the case. We're looking to get the license done under two thousand nineteen license terms. If in two thousand twenty Comcast comes up with some creative changes they'd like to see, that's great, but you know what? We're on the other side of the line. Let's just move ahead and not debate those changes. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions.
I would like to hear from the town administrator, since you've worked on this also.
Just in general? So I really focused, well, I worked with the cable group, who's great. We got together and said, okay, what, where do you see yourselves in ten years? One of the first things I did when I got to Dayton was looked at our old agreement, because we got notification that it was coming up, and we needed to work on it. So it's something I've been working on literally the entire time I've been at Dayton, and I noticed, I knew from previous experience that one percent was low. So I knew that we could only go up from there, and that there were other protections that the town could see. I don't know all the legalese to that, so I did request that the town hire a special counsel attorney, Solomon, who's only worked out to be a friend to Dayton and very helpful. And I'm, I'm hopeful that Mr. Sullivan does come back and tie everything up with us, because I do just want to get this going. I think the cable group works very hard. They do a lot with a little. They, I call them our lifeline. You know, cable, public access is our lifeline. It's the way we get our message, our, our business, everything. We're incredibly reliant on it. And if we cannot get the funding to keep it going, that's a big problem for us. So it was something that I prioritized, and I, I very much enjoyed working with you guys, and figuring out something that will provide us room to grow, expand, showcase things. Something we didn't talk about is the studio they're working on to build out, so that we can have some public, members of the public come in and, and do interviews. Myrna Santos, the town historian, what she does, that can be raised to another level. Other things too, like going over the warrant pretty easily, things that can be taped during the day and then broadcast out. So we have a lot of great ideas, and we're really just hopeful to wrap this up so we can get them going.
Dave, do you have any comments you want to make on this at all, that you, you worked on this?
No, I, I just want to say, I, I've worked with a great committee we work on, and, you know, we're trying to be transparently like the selectmen, and we enjoy what we're doing, and we're looking forward to bring more content to, to Channel nine, like, you know, small businesses interview, like a day in a life, you know, like Reed's Bob or something like that. So we're looking forward to, you know, a lot of big changes for us.
Thank you. Go ahead. Have any questions?
No, I did just want to acknowledge the cable committee. I know you guys are essentially volunteers, and I know you have like a modest salary, but I really appreciate you working with the town administrator to secure the best agreement possible for the license renewal. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And don't forget Laura's, she's at third.
Yep.
She's watching upstairs.
Hi Laura.
I'm in control right now, so.
Well, thank you. So we'll get an update.
Yes, so next steps are, the hope was that we would have heard back. We had given Bob this license a couple weeks ago, or a week or so ago. So the hope was that we would actually have something here with concrete dates.
Yeah, and although this is, this language reflects what Mr. Sullivan and I have done in licenses this year, other than the Dayton specific. But, you know, it's fifty pages. You need to look at it, and so it's, it's not, out of any ordinary sense that he and Comcast haven't finalized that. It's just that it, we were hoping it was possible, but, you know, he's got a lot of things on his plate, and I said, no one could have been better in terms of listening to the town's concerns and needs, and, and being a fair negotiator, but a tough negotiator for his company. So I'm optimistic we'll be able to move it over the line. I just don't want to get involved in, in, in whatever the world is going forward in two thousand twenty, as I mentioned. I just think we should move this ahead based on, based on that. One final point, your team, Dave, Mallory, who did a tremendous amount of the drafting, most of it, put together a, a vision plan that was really instrumental in, in getting, in having Comcast and Mr. Sullivan understand the needs and the interests of Dayton, and that makes a difference. They, they take their business seriously, and when they see a town that does a lot with a little, and has a plan, and a dedication to doing more, it, it allows the negotiations to go pretty good. So I like, I thank Mallory for that plan, and for Dave and his team for, for being a part of that.
Absolutely. And thank you, sir, as well. I did want to say to the cable committee down the road, I would love to start that discussion. Maybe we could look into cable casting from other, like maybe we could live cable cast from Old Town Hall. So that'll be, that'll be a really nice discussion to have as we go forward. So thank you for thinking ahead. I appreciate it.
They also, one of my, I just have to brag about this, because I thought it was such a great idea. So they came up with having a camera at the library, and then they would take time to teach somebody how to use it, a patron how to use it, and then that person can go and video, you know, for a project, or anything that they might want to dabble in film. And I thought that was a really nice partnership, and really just using the dollars wisely, and on a whole new level. Like really just totally different, out of the box thinking.
You won't get to be out of here, but Mallory is an amazing source for, for thoughts and, and for creative ideas. And, and that's right. You know, in the modern day, there's no job, it's not going to have a video component. So what, what your expanding program will do is allow for that training. For, you know, being an older father, you're always looking for places for your kids to go, where they can not just view, but participate and create things. Access is where that can be done. Somebody gets done with, with high school, and lets take some time off before they decide what they want to do, or they come back from college, they don't have a place they can go to create the video that they could create before. And access program allows that. So this, in an age where it's more difficult to get a good license, again, based on the town's efforts and work here, I think you're going to, you're now going to get funding that allows that. And it's, it's, as I said, it's, it's the training, as Mallory said, as much as the product that will, will make a difference in the town. And what you'll find is ten, fifteen years, even less, five years, and go, kids go to school, and you find out what they did in college, and the jobs they have, even if it's not just a video job, or in terms of, it's something else of the video component, or they go into some sort of media. They come back, and it's remarkable, and they'll talk about that they got their start here in, 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 in Dayton through the town's program. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
So we'll be back with a date for our public hearing and all that good stuff.
Yep.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So continuing-
Thank you very much.
Continuing with new business review lists of elected officials whose terms have expired. This is addressed to a clerk, so if you want to read that.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chairman. Just a second. Okay. So this is from the town clerk, dated December second, two thousand nineteen, regarding elected officials with terms expiring. The attached is a list of elected officials whose terms will expire in two thousand twenty. On December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, all elected officials will receive official notification that their term is expiring, and that nomination papers are available in the town clerk's office on January second, two thousand, twenty twenty. Also, the Taunton Daily Gazette will run a press release in January informing residents of the date of the annual town election, and that nomination papers are available at the town's, town clerk's office until five PM on Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. The town clerk will keep us updated on who has requested nomination papers for each public office. Don't hesitate to contact her with any questions. So I'm going to read these in order of office, first name, last name, address, town, term expiring, and how many years the term is for. Board of assessors, Pamela J. Waller, three three seven Center Street, North Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. Board of selectmen, Kenneth J. Pacheco, eighteen sixty Milk Street, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. DR School District Committee, Eliza M. Kuchar, one seven six Center Street, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. DR School District Committee, Janice M. Terry, sixty-six Walker Street, North Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. Housing Authority, Alice E. Souza, one six seven nine Elm Street, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, five-year term. Parks and Recreation, Susan P. Cody, five six two Hart Street, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. Planning Board, Thomas J. Pyers, thirty-two twenty-three Millers Lane, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, five-year term. Public Library Trustees, Ronald J. O'Connor, five nine four School Street, North Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. Sewer Commissioner, Carol A. Beauregard, four seven two Esther Brook Ave, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, three-year term. And of course, town moderator, William E. McKeon Jr., two three zero eight Pleasant Street, Dayton. Term expiring two thousand twenty, one-year term. And I think we all know, based on Mr. McKeon's letter of resignation, which we'll get to this evening, that that will be a vacancy. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. See, appoint members of the board of selectmen to sit on negotiations. So we have a couple of contracts coming up, and we've asked that a member of the board of selectmen be part of the negotiations. So we need someone to represent the nine eleven signal- signal callers.
No, to represent us. What, okay, yes.
Right, okay, yes, yes.
No!
We're not unionizing the board of selectmen.
They're not actually negotiating. We're all on the same side of the table.
So I will step down and nominate Brett Segafus, Segafus for this.
Which, which?
The dispatcher, the 9/11 signal operators, nine, one, one.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Do have one question more.
Well, it's too late, you've got to.
No, no, it's fine. But I, so regarding the scheduling, the town administrator will work with whoever from the board sits in on letting, okay, when the meetings are and all that. Okay, thanks.
And the clerical union.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I hope you'll accept it. I'm going to make a motion that Chairman Pacheco sit in on the clerical union negotiations.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Brett Segafus to be on the open space committee as a non-voting board of selectmen representative.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Brett Segafus to the open space committee as a non-voting board of selectmen representative.
I will step down and second that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
I will serve if appointed.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I did want to make one comment, because someone had reached out to me about this. This is not because the board of selectmen feels like they need to keep a mindful eye on, for example, the open space committee. This is sort of to provide a continuity between our board, who will eventually have to act on the open space plan. And I will be a non-voting member, obviously, on the open space committee, and Serpent and the other departments that will need to coordinate to get that done and part of the master plan. So I appreciate the board.
Thank you. We got a letter from Chief McGee. Dear Board, I am writing this letter requesting your permission to dispose of hose that recently failed the national fire protection hose test. I am asking to dispose of the following hose sizes and total lengths. One and a half inch, 50 feet, one and three-quarter inch, 2,300 feet, two and a half inch, 1,400 feet, three inch, 350 feet, and four inch, 1,380 feet. This hose does not meet the minimum standards for certification to be used in firefighting operation and is considered unsafe. If there are any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me at any time. Any questions regarding that?
When you say dispose, does he want us to declare the surplus? And they dispose of it that way?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request of Chief McGee and approve his request to declare surplus, the list of hose that you just read.
Second.
Any discussion? If not?
Yes, I do have one. No, it's okay, Mr. Chairman. No, no, it's okay. Do we know if he's going to need or want to replace these things that we're going to declare surplus?
I believe he will. There are some, his engines and are going through, they did their annual tests of all of them, and so some of them are, they're having repairs and such. But I think he's good to go. He hasn't mentioned a need for some emergency purchase, so he may have funds in his budget already, and he's just going through some tough times with his equipment right now.
I understand.
But we got to keep it safe.
Thank you.
No further questions?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Accept the appointment of Jonathan Gale as ADA coordinator. Town administrator, myself, had an opportunity today to interview Mr. Gale for this position. You have his resume?
Do we have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
I do. I have recommendation. My recommendation is that we appoint Jonathan Gale as our ADA coordinator.
Sold.
I will happily second that.
Any discussion?
I did just want to point out, in case anybody's interested, because there was some talk about this position. We did post it. We had one applicant, who was Mr. Gale, and I just wanted that on the record or out there, that we did follow through and post it.
Yep, we did. It was on the website. I'm sorry. I did, I did want to say, I feel very comfortable, not because I know Mr. Gale in a professional capacity, but I feel very comfortable having him be quote-unquote "permanently" in this role. He's been, he had been doing it for several years already in a strictly volunteer capacity, and I look forward to seeing how Mr. Gale continues to make this role his own, and seeing how things develop as we embark on our five-year plan to make all our buildings compliant. So thank you.
Yeah, we had a good conversation with him today, and I look forward to bringing back to the board some of the changes that he's interested in doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Appoint Bill Pruitt for the membership to the historic commission. So the historic commission have.
I do have one question about Mr. Gale, about the ADA coordinator role. Do we have to deter, so this ended up being funded at the special town meeting. Do what?
I just wrote my note on this. Very good.
Do you want to elaborate?
Yes, so this came up today, because we asked, what's your proposed schedule? Like, how do you, how do you plan on tackling this? Questions like that. And I'm wondering if this should be given a monthly stipend instead of hourly tracking 10 hours a month. And so it was $25, we talked about it. This is how we came up with the figure to provide town meeting, but we talked about $25 an hour for an average of 10 hours a month. We determined today that with getting this grant, there's going to be a ton of work, and it would likely exceed.
Which we said from the beginning.
Yes, which would likely exceed, you know, 10 hours. And so where we're not getting into this hourly battle, I think a monthly stipend might work out.
Is this, is this, so I've been stipended and I've been salaried before. Is it the same thing, like, for?
No, it's paid differently. So he, we have, you actually know this, as a selectman, you get, we have monthly payroll, and that's how you folks are paid. He would be submitting monthly payroll if you voted for the monthly stipend.
I guess my.
Otherwise, it's hourly.
I guess my feeling is, it might be sort of nightmarish with the changing hours and the, and first of all, this whole role is new, so we really don't know what the demands are going to be on it. I'm sure there will be weeks, as you said before, where he's going to be working maybe even more than what he was allotted, and then weeks where maybe less, and then it all averages out, right? I almost think that it might be better to do monthly, because maybe that might make it easier in terms of the town accountant's office, so.
Yes. And I also think.
But I'll defer to my colleagues.
You know, we discussed his, his public services, like visiting Lincoln Village and having some time with those folks to hear their concerns, hear their needs, talk to people about what might be missing at town meeting that we're not readily, you know, aware of. So I do think, to your point where it's new, we could kind of carve out an appropriate schedule and see what's working and what's not. And we also have so much going on in this vein that I think a monthly stipend might be appropriate here.
I think it's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, I agree. And I think Linda will thank us.
As ours are going to ebb and flow, if you just divide it up by what we have left in for months.
Yeah.
My other question, though, and I think maybe I didn't phrase it properly in the beginning. Now that his appointment is official today, or at this meeting, now the compensation component commences, right?
Starting now.
Okay.
So if we're halfway through the month, it'll end up being prorated for December that he'll get half. My thought is, if it was $10 of, $10, $20, no, $25 an hour for 10 hours a month, it'd be $250 a month.
Do we know if he, so when I was a graduate student, being paid monthly was, could be burdensome some months? Does he, do we know if he, like, cares monthly or whatever?
We didn't ask that question, but I, you know, I feel that he'd be okay with a monthly stipend, getting paid once a month.
Okay.
We had discussed, I mean, we brought it up, because we were talking about the difficulties in processing a payroll for this role, so.
Okay.
And he indicated that if he does more than 10 hours, he's not going to be asking the town to pay him for those extra hours. So just knowing all the work that's going to be coming up, especially with this grant that's coming up, he's going to be working more than 10 hours a month, as I see it, so.
I would, I would hope, though, if that were the case, that he would at least track, because then we need, that needs to factor into the next fiscal year, too. Okay. All right, we're all on the same page.
So is it $250 a month?
Yes. We should have a motion, I guess, for that. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we compensate the ADA coordinator monthly at a sum of $250 per month.
Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I thank you to you both for that.
Absolutely.
Thank Jonathan for applying and, accept the appointment of Bill Pruitt. This is from the chairman of the historic commission. I'm a member of the historic commission. Last night's meet, commission meeting, this is dated December 11th, we voted unanimously to recommend Bill Pruitt for membership to the commission. Can you please see that he goes to the next, goes to the next selectmen's meeting? So entertain a motion that Bill Pruitt, we interviewed him at the last meeting, the appointment to the historic commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Bill Pruitt to the historical commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next item is to appoint Tom Borkin to the open space committee. As we all know, he was here at the last meeting, showed, expressed an interest in the open space committee, and, and he's decided to, if he asked that if he could join that committee.
I will happily make that motion, because I stared at him during the meeting.
Well, I'm going to happily second, and under discussion, I'm going to note that I'm really grateful to Mr. Berkwin for stepping up on this, because even though I will be on the, or am on the open space committee now in a non-voting member capacity, once the open space plan is drafted, it needs to be voted on by the open space committee to come out of that committee. And so I would not have resolved the quorum issue. Mr. Berkwin does. So my hat's off to you, Mr. Berkwin, and I really appreciate you for stepping up.
Thank you. Did we make a motion already?
We did, yeah, we did.
We got a motion and a second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
So is the historic commission now full?
Yes.
And open space?
Halfway.
There's three members plus me.
So, okay.
Yep.
So two, there's two more seats.
We can do work. We'll work on the other two.
Yes.
Oh, so there are open seats, but you've got a, you've got a quorum now. That's good, okay, that's fine.
And with the historic commission, most of the members, the new members, have been appointed the last year or so.
Oh, that's good.
And they're all seeming to be motivated, so.
Making new history.
Making new history.
I like it.
The next item is the, accept the appointment of Zachary Freitas as intern for the Board of Health. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health is pleased to announce that once again, we will be adding Zachary Freitas to our team for the internship during his winter break. Zach will begin work on Monday, January 6th, 2020. His schedule will be 15 hours a week, Monday through Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, unless otherwise requested. The internship will last approximately last, approximately last eight weeks. It'll last approximately last.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Zachary Freitas as intern, intern to the Board of Health as outlined.
I'm going to happily second that, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas.
We got a letter from the harbor master, effective December 1st, 2019, Assistant Harbor Master Elliot Burrows has resigned his position as Assistant Harbor Master for the town of Dayton. Mr. Burrows leaves his department in good standing and has performed in a very professional and respectful manner. I have accepted Mr. Burrows' verbal resignation. I am forwarding this information to require, to the required town officials to formally terminate any and all rights, responsibilities, authorities, and benefits Mr. Burrows may have received while holding the position of Assistant Harbor Master. I will be seeking qualified candidates to fill Mr. Burrows' role throughout the upcoming months.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Assistant Harbor Master Elliot Burrows, with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Is he the man that took us out on the boat?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, he was good.
Yep. Review or approve liquor licenses, so.
This is the rest of the list?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. One second, Mr. Chairman.
So, Board of Selectmen, this letter is to certify that the following licenses have filed all the necessary paperwork and have paid the fees to renew their licenses for 2020. Therefore, I am recommending the renewal of the following licenses. Alice's Last Stop, Gatorana, I guess, doing business as Fast Mart.
Vine Yak.
Vine Yak, doing business as Mount Hope Liquors, and Almedas Country Store.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we renew the following liquor licenses recommended. Alice's Last Stop, Gatorani, DPA, Fast Mart, Vine Yak, DPA, Mount Hope Liquors, and Almedas Country Store.
Second.
So Almedas, is that the old license, will continue with the old?
We were very confused. So we call the AVCC and the lottery, and Karen has done yeoman's work on this. The advice they're giving us and the direction they're giving us is to renew it now and then process the transfer concurrently.
Okay.
And they'll take care of things at the state level with the transfer, so.
So that store will open again?
Hopefully.
I think it's probably, you know how, like, you have a passport, but it, and so the renewal's kind of easy, but if you let it expire and then you have all that paperwork, I think it's probably something like that.
Any discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Board of Selectmen, this letter is to certify that the following licenses have been notified and given all of the necessary paperwork to renew their licenses for 2020. Therefore, I am recommending the renewal of the following licenses pending receipt of paperwork and payment. Class 1, Lenz Propane Truck Corporation, Trucks and Iron Traders. Class 2, Mannheim Remarkin Inc., Edward D. Reese, doing business as Reese's Auto Sales, Bristol County Auto, Inc., William Rasmussen, parentheses, Kimball Enterprises, Judith A. Costa, Costa Truck and Auto, North Dayton Garage, Inc., Advance Automotive Repairs, Inc., Town Line Auto and Storage, 508 Customs and Collision, Inc. Class 3, Stephen Lewis, L&amp;L Used Car Parts, Borges Foreign Auto Parts, Inc., and Bristol County Auto, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we renew the licenses as read by you this evening.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Board of Selectmen, this letter is to certify that the following licensee has been notified and given all of the necessary paperwork to renew the entertainment license for 2020. Therefore, I am recommending the renewal pending receipt of paperwork and payment. Seventeen Twenty Corporation, doing business as seventeen, seventeen twenty, seventeen twelve, Corporation, doing business as seventeen twelve and Tavern.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we renew the entertainment license for 2020 for seventeen twelve Corporation, DPA, seventeen twelve and Tavern.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I did just, I don't remember how we did this before, but I really liked the letter. So thank you, Mrs. Brady.
Thank you. This letter is to, addressed to Susanna Maderis, town clerk. Dear Ms. Maderis, please accept my resignation as Dayton town moderator, effective today. This is dated December 9th. I have many lasting memories of the great people I have the pleasure and good fortune to work with over the past 33 years of service to our town. I wish all the best to everyone. Very truly yours, William McKeon, and he's resigning as our town moderator. We have a letter in response to that to William McKeon Jr. with regret and appreciation for all you have done for the town of Dayton. The board of selectmen accepts your resignation. Over the past 33 years, you have been our town moderator. As you are well aware, at times, it's been a difficult task. You have treated our residents with fairness and respect. Your knowledge and understanding of how a town meeting is run will be missed. Whomever replaces you will have big shoes to fill. We wish you, we wish you, Collette, and your family all the best. And by all the selecting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept with Adib's gratitude and regret the resignation for retirement purposes of William McKeon Jr.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
You didn't do selectmen's reports.
Yeah, you missed.
Okay, selectmen's reports.
I've got a couple here, a very, I'm going to just zip through these quickly, because I did send out a brief email summarizing some of them. Stormwater Committee met last Thursday, and the major topic we're reviewing is Phase 2 of the proposed solar farm off of Elm Street. We requested a lot of information. It was a good meeting. There was a lot of cooperation expressed. They were given permission to make repairs to the existing roads at Phase 1. They will not be. They will not be allowed to do anything at the Phase Two level until we get the rest of the info. And we're meeting on the twenty-third of, uh, December to hopefully finish up that public hearing. Uh, on, um, Monday of this week, uh, the first meeting of the DR Financial Advisory Committee on which, uh, Edward Schwartz, Robert Rendon, and I sit, representing the Town of Dayton, met with reps from Rehoboth and school officials at the high school to begin the process of budget preparation for FY twenty-one. Uh, the new assessments have been calculated based on the point sixty-six increase that the Department of Education, DESI, ordered in settlement of the dispute over the budgets not being approved. We expect that the Town of Dayton's assessment will drop slightly. And, um, there was a, a brief review of the extent that the Department of Education will have. And overseer Jay Sullivan has been appointed by the department, and he will be paid as a state employee by the Department of Education. So, our next meeting is coming up the end of January, and we hope to have more information relative to formulation of the budget. We made a number of requests of things that we would like to see. We reviewed our five-year plans in Dayton and included the, uh, uh, fuel depot that we would like. Uh, on the Rehoboth side, major problem at their school is the well at, that services Palmer River and the Beckwood School. At the regional high school, I mentioned a number of, uh, improvements they would like to see at the athletic schools. At the local Dayton schools, the only things that seemed to be mentioned were the, uh, access drive, which we had a, we've got a report on that was mentioned earlier in the meeting tonight. And, um, the NESDEX study on future school needs has arrived, and they are going to be, uh, requesting that each town nominate people, a person, to sit in on those meetings to discuss the report. It's over a hundred pages long. But it's supposed to give us some kind of direction going forward for needs of our schools, uh, in both towns. Uh, the significant thing, I think, that was pointed out by, uh, Finance Committee Chairman Ed Schwartz at the meeting was, when we were talking about spending money on capital issues, uh, what that excellent point that Mr. Schwartz made was that, before any money is going to be, uh, further expended at the regional school district, the high school, the great structure of the regional district must be determined, defined, and resolved in the towns. Uh, there has been discussion about dissolving the, the entire, uh, school district and everyone going on their own. There have been, uh, partial, uh, return to the former established, uh, grade structure with a nine-to-twelve high school at a regional level and individual, uh, grades in the towns. And that point was well taken, and it was consensus of the people in the room. That's, that's a major issue. Uh, so, I don't anticipate we're going to be putting a lot of money into capital at the high school at this point in time until we have that status done. And, uh, last night, I attended the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting as the Stormwater Chairman, uh, because I thought we were going to get more information on, uh, stormwater plan, uh, operation and maintenance. Uh, unfortunately, a key member of the board was ill, and so, um, we rescheduled. I did make a request of the proponents, uh, that I was going to make last night, but rather than hold it till the fourteenth of January, I gave it to them and just say, "Would you please get this information to us, uh, by the fourteenth?" So, all of that's moving along, but that's basically the stuff that I covered.
Well, to your point, um, Selectmen Gulart, regarding capital expenses at the school, I think, um, you know, obviously, I'm not going to speak for the Town of Rehoboth, but I think the Town of Dayton, um, had that foresight, which is why we formed the Study Committee, um, that's sort of looking at what our options are. So, we're grateful for the work that they have, uh, embarked on. I wanted to mention that it was really nice this morning. Um, so, first of all, town hall didn't open till ten AM. Apologize for anyone who was trying to get here before ten AM. We did put the word out. Um, I'm glad that, uh, we had the second annual holiday breakfast. Um, I think, uh, giving back to our employees who, um, you know, give their life to the service of our residents to provide public services, um, is really important. So, I did want to thank everyone for that. Uh, especially, uh, Madam Administrator and Mrs. Brady, who I know, um, do a lot of the planning, so, very thankful. I know it meant a lot to a lot of people. Let me kind of think if I have anything else. Oh, the Town Administrator and I have been very busy. Um, we read the hiring policy, uh, this evening. We have a couple other things. I know one of them is going through the Policy Review Board, so we will have some more things, uh, to present to you, um, in the new year. So, look, uh, forward to that.
And, and just to mention, we had an ugly sweater contest. It was small. The ugliest sweater, and the prize that was given was awarded, uh, unanimous decision of the Board of Selectmen was given to the Town Administrator. She was supposed to wear it tonight, folks, but it was so ugly. That's all I'll say.
Are you guys wearing your ugly sweaters?
No, I got, I got Snoopy. Snoopy is never ugly. Joku.
I chose not to wear mine. I thought the flash and lights would be too much for the, uh, for the public.
Mine was distracting. Tinsel.
It was unanimous, though. I tell you, it was.
It was unanimous, it was ugly.
I don't know if it's a contest you want to win. I don't know about that.
So, her prize was a, uh, Boston Red Sox Stocken-type hat with a Christmas decoration on it.
Wear that with pride.
Which she also didn't wear tonight.
Feel badly about it.
So, this is probably a good time. Yeah, I want to ask that you read that. That's either you or I signed it. While we get this little, uh, uh, break here, just want to, uh, from the Board of Selectmen, we'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday. Hope, hopefully, you get to enjoy it with your family and friends. Time has passed quickly. Who would have thought that just in five days, we'll be celebrating Festivus? I mean, it's just, it's amazing.
Did you bring the poll?
No, I didn't bring the poll.
Wait, we're not meeting again before Christmas. Do I get to air my grievances?
On New Year's.
On the twenty-third, yes. So, uh, hopefully, everybody has a very, uh, good holiday.
Safe, healthy, happy, and New Year's, too, because we won't see you. We won't see you for a year. Probably a lot of people saying, "Okay."
Yes. For those that are awake.
Is it post-nine because we're getting low-key? Okay, we're close. Nine o'clock is our, is our-
The witching hour?
Our time. We can't hold it together anymore.
Cable is saying, "Wrap this up." Okay, I think that's everything. Looks like everybody signed it. Oh, you got another one here.
You got a bunch over there, yeah.
Okay, I'll sign it in a minute.
So, the next item on the acknowledgements, I'm going to have, uh, Mrs. Gulart to read.
Um, for those of you who get the Gazette or read it online, um,
Thank you.
It really goes back further than, uh, A Taste of Dayton, but I mentioned that, I sent a letter to the Gazette, a letter to the editor. I think most of us know that Mike Gay has, uh, been a longtime employee of the Gazette, and, uh, I will say he was sort of retired, uh, due to financial constraints at the Gazette. However, uh, Mike is, I believe, doing now freelance work. He has done incredible work and coverage on events all over the areas, but a lot in the Town of Dayton. And I just, it just, it seemed like every weekend, every, there were a color spread on the front page of our town and our events and our children and our citizens and, uh, everything from Taste of Dayton to pumpkin picking to the parade. It's super, super job. The man is so professional. And I just want to read this letter, uh, because I think this really echoes how most of us feel about the work of Mike Gay, and he deserves the recognition. Letters to the editor, quote, "So much joy is brought into our lives through the lens of Mike Gay," unquote. "I write to recognize and commend the excellent photography and news coverage that Mike Gay has been providing to area residents, especially over the past few months and going back to A Taste of Dayton in September. His talent and accuracy brings so much life and enjoyment to those of us who read the paper daily. We may not be able to attend all of the events in the area, but his coverage provides such good details that it is like we were there. Thank you, Mike, for doing such a great job and for keeping us updated with those special events and moments that become memories for us over the years. The N.C.J. Gulart of Dayton Mass."
It's nice of you to, uh, write that. I think he's worked for the forty years, I think.
Yeah, and then there was like a layoff, but-
Yeah.
Yep, I remember that.
His, uh, his coverage, quite frankly, other than obituaries and legal notices, is selling papers. Everybody wants those pictures. Mr. McKeon was on the front page with one of his grandchildren and his son-in-law, and I cut it out and sent it to him.
Light on, yep.
Yeah, Mike, it's super.
Thank you, Selectmen Gulart.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike, for all you do.
Minutes.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to accept or review the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of December eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting on November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and the joint meeting with Rehoboth on October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, abstention, the ayes have it.
Okay. Uh, you just reminded me of something when you said abstention. I would like the record to show that I have reviewed the firefighter's contract. I abstained from voting on it because I had not had a chance to read it. I did support it. I did vote for it at town meeting. Um, I have since gone through it. I would like the record, uh, to, uh, record that I have, uh, if, I guess if this is possible. I wish to be recorded as voting in favor of that, uh, contract. And I know you can't go back and change the vote in the minutes when I abstained, but if you would cross-reference it indicating that I have now, uh, and I'm going to sign the contract. I've got it here tonight.
What you can do is move to reconsider the vote. Either of you who voted in the prevailing way can move to reconsider the vote, and then it can be recorded as voting in favor.
I'll step down and move to re- reconsider the vote on the firefighter's contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Now you call-
Now we make a, yeah.
Well, you would-
We need a motion.
You make a new motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify the contract with the, uh, International Association of Firefighters Local four-three-three-two that was, uh, executed on December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Okay. Are there two that have to be signed? Oh, yeah, here, excuse me, just a minute.
Yep.
Okay, so, that's done.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman, I moved that the following warrants be approved. What's the reference to November eighteenth? Should that be December?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, okay, I didn't know if I, I was missing something, okay. Okay, so, I'll do that again. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Twenty-five A dash twenty in amount of a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars, eighty-five cents payroll. Twenty-five B dash twenty in amount of a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred three dollars, thirty-six cents payroll. Twenty-five C dash twenty in amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand, eighty-two dollars, ninety-six cents accounts payable. Twenty-five D dash twenty in amount of forty thousand dollars, even accounts payable, all dated December eighteenth, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstention, the ayes have it. Entertain a motion, well, public input, there's no public here. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, two, three, and six, nope, just two.
Two.
Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator contract request.
Second.
Is there a second? We will not be, uh, coming back into open, uh, session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention, the ayes have it. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
See you next year. Safe and happy.